This is the February 8, 2022, meeting of the Akushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. I am opening the meeting by roll call vote today as we are all participating remotely on Zoom. When I call your names, please respond here. Jerry?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
And we have Dina Brassa with us as well. Dina?
Here, St. Pierre. I heard Dina Brassa at St. Pierre, so yeah, sorry. I wasn't paying attention. Just kidding.
I know. And you know what? That was dirt. That was dirt. We do not have Dina Brassa here. We have Dina St. Pierre here today. Oh, my goodness. I think it's gonna be one of those days. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. The first item of business today is the secretary's report from January 4. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions for the minutes? Oh, all right. Then we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the secretary's report.
A second.
All in favor by roll call. Jerry?
Yes.
Nancy?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
And myself. Hi. Thank you. Okay, we have the budget?
Could everyone receive the budget that I sent last night? Yeah, okay. And if not, I can give you the totals if you don't have it. But there's not too too much to report. I think salary is as expected at this point in the fiscal year with a total of 56.8% spent out. And as far as operating goes, the energy line is through January in terms of Eversource. And that's also the line that we pay the water sewer bill through. So that's up to date. The telephone line is up to date. The office supplies line at 87.3% spent out currently. That will be depleted this week for sure. We've just ordered processing labels and toner for the public printer. And I noticed the price went up about $9 on that total order of toner from what we purchased in November. So between those two things, we will wipe out that line. But as a reminder, we're going to have an overage, or we do have an overage in the sales line. So we can still, of course, purchase office supplies either using the extra funds in the sales line or state aid. And finally, the materials line will be spent out in the next couple of weeks also, which is very typical at this time of year. We're normally spent out of that line by February, if not a little bit earlier the past couple of years. So that will be spent out in the next couple of weeks. And so that leaves us for operating at 81% spent and a total of between salaries and operating of 61.5% spent. Unless you have any questions for me, that's where we stand.
I assume since the telephone line is up to date, that they sent you the totals that you needed?
The reconciliation forms through December.
Perfect. Awesome. Great. I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything?
No.
Okay, then we need a motion.
I will accept the budget report.
A second.
All in favor? Danielle?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
And myself. Hi. Thank you. We have all business. We have the FY '23 budget.
So I thought I would just give you a quick update on the budget, since that's what we talked about at our last meeting. I met with the Finance Committee on January 26. A few of you were in that via Zoom as well. So thank you for joining. I think it went well. I mean, I feel like when we do meet with the Finance Committee, it typically does go well. So I felt, you know, the same this year. I will be meeting with the Board of Selectmen, as I understand, on Thursday, February 17. And I also found out just an hour or so ago that I will be meeting this Friday with the interim Town Administrator Jamie Kelly to review our budget requests and also just to talk about the library. But we're doing it this soon because of the fact that the BOS meeting is scheduled for next Thursday. So that was it. I just wanted you to be aware of what was happening with it.
Sounds like a lot of briefing. Does anybody have anything they want to add?
I just wanted to say it was very nice the support we had from Mr. Chu for attending our meeting and just being supportive at that particular presentation. So it's just so nice when we hear people supporting us. But really, I just wanted to mention his name.
Yeah, thanks, Nancy. Good point. Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. We have the 2021 annual report.
Yeah, that time of year again already. Like I said in my email, I hope you had some coffee with you when you reviewed it. I'm guessing you all had a chance to take a look. But I feel that the annual report, and I'm sure you would agree with me, is something that should be regarded with thought and attention to detail as it becomes sort of the formal public record of the year. I think especially... Oh, hey, Steve?
I am so sorry to be late.
That's okay. Thank you for coming.
We're just starting on the annual report.
Okay.
And I'll catch you up on other things later.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. But yeah, like I feel it particularly with the past couple of years. I mean, we don't know how future generations will refer to the annual report. I mean, my staff and I have annual reports going back to the early 1900s, even like a couple from the 1800s here. And we look at those often, and it's amazing how some of our same issues were issues 100 years ago. So I mean, I think we could expect that people will be potentially referring back to these annual reports years from now. And if not outside of the library, then I would think at least the library staff will be referring to them. So it should be an accurate record. There is some repetition from the 2020 report, but as it stands alone, I think some of it was necessary to repeat, you know, in terms of takeout. And I will highlight a few things. And of course, you know, I just want to stress that I welcome any feedback or any clarifications or changes that you would like me to make to it, because it's as much the board's report as it is mine and the staff's report. So, you know, please, please weigh in. But I did just want to highlight a couple of things. Library takeout started in June 2020, continued through July 3, 2021. And during that time period, there were just under 6,800 pickups scheduled, which, you know, who would have thunk it? And, you know, which equals like passing just less than 45,000 items through our community room windows. So again, as we talked about in the past, we were so fortunate to have the setup that we had that allowed us for an easy transmission of material to our patrons. It was mid-March of 2021 when we opened by appointment for browsing. Those appointments, there was limited hours. So I think it was like 12 hours a week to begin with. The people could actually come in. There were 45-minute sessions. And that lasted for about two months. And in that two-month period, over 400 patrons visited. And takeout was going on at the same time. So, you know, if they didn't feel comfortable coming into the building, they at least had the option to still use takeout. And, you know, as the state began lifting restrictions and sort of all the guidelines kind of went by the wayside at the end of May 2021, while I was on vacation, I'll never forget. You know, we opened May 29, 2021 with no appointments, but with still limited hours until June 21, 2021, when we opened at a full 45 hours a week, no appointments necessary. And, you know, I'm proud to say we've had no disruptions since then. You know, we've remained open 45 hours a week, with the exception, of course, of holidays. Or, you know, we have had a couple of snow days this year or at the end of 20... I mean, we didn't have any in 2021. I might be getting ahead of myself and thinking of 2022. But anyway, I'm proud to say we've been open. We haven't, you know, had any further disruptions due to COVID. So I think that's great and worth noting. In terms of programming, there wasn't all that much to say, because we were, you know, just doing the programming outside from July through mid-November. But I think what we were able to offer was, well, I know it was well-received. And it makes, I think, all of us excited for what will happen this spring when it warms up. And as you know, you all approved a plan for indoor programming in October of 2021, limited to 10 people at a time. And that's allowed for scout troops to meet. We have one Girl Scout troop that's meeting every other week approximately. And we have one book group that's meeting once a month. Though for the past couple of months, they've been meeting by email again, which is what they did when the building was closed. But they, you know, opted to meet by email the past couple of months due to the spike that we were seeing in COVID cases. Then we get into the library mission and offerings with our materials and services. This is a section that traditionally has been in the annual report. It was not included in the annual report last year only because there was so much to document about what had happened. So we removed that section. But it's back in this year. Just mentioning everything that we have that's available to borrow. I've mentioned the grant from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners for the hotspots. This week, those have been slow to take off, but this week it's interesting because they're all checked out, which is great. So I think we've had, you know, sort of the same people coming in to borrow them weekly. But now we're starting to see some new faces come in. And I think they're really proving to be a valuable resource to our patrons. Then, you know, we always include a section on state certification and what that means to the library. We always talk about the Sales Network membership. And then we have that small section on the Staff and Board of Trustees. And this year, typically, when staff retire or move on, we don't include their names in the annual report. But I really felt it was important to include the names of the three library technicians who left in 2021. They were, and always to my mind, will be a very important part of our staff. All three of them individually brought a lot to the library and to the team of staff here. They are missed greatly. And I just thought it was important to recognize their names here as well. They will get mentioned in the booklet that you get at town meeting with the warrant that always lists the names of people who have retired or left employment in the previous year. But I wanted to include them here in the annual report as well. And then I'll talk a little bit more about the statistics once, you know, once you weigh in with, you know, any thoughts you have on this, anything you'd like me to change, add. Any feedback is welcome.
I think you did an outstanding job, Dina. And I was overwhelmed reading through it, like, how did we, did you guys get through that year? And, you know, I use the library all the time. I'm reading constantly. And I do remember it wasn't challenging for the patrons. Myself, I consider a patron here. And it just, you made it so easy to do and didn't miss a beat for the patrons. And that's a tribute to you and your staff. And so many places shut down because of COVID, and you never had to. So very much appreciated.
Hey, we got a good team here.
Yeah, we sure do.
It was very well-written, lots of detail. I wouldn't change a thing. I think it's just, it's great just the way it is.
It touches all the subjects. It's great.
Thank you. Thanks. I had, you know, I can't really remember writing the 2020 report, but when I read it back, I was like, wow, this came out really well. Like, I don't really remember writing it, 2020. But when I had to sit down to write this one, I'm telling you, I was like dragging my feet on it because I feel like so much of it wasn't new, yet so much of it was new. And so, you know, it was like, how do I say this? So it took me a bit of time to put it together, you know, which is as it should, because it's something that should be, you know, thought out. But it wasn't easy. I don't know. It just, this is a hard time. I think we all can relate to that. This is a, like, we're still living in it in some ways. I mean, has it gotten better? Yes, of course. But we're still living in it. So to reflect on it is a little, is a little challenging. So, but it, you know, it took some time. But anything that you would like me to, I mean, I appreciate everything so far, but I just want to make sure nothing to take out or add in or clarify or I said too much. I know I'm already, we were given that space, though, so I also never want to shorten it. I mean, it's been this length the entire time I've been employed here. And I don't want to be the one to make us lose space in the annual report. So following that template, you know, I'm trying to keep it at the length that it, you know, is traditional for us, let's say.
No, I think it looks good. Does anyone else have any, anyone have any comments or questions or anything on it?
Once we do the statistics, which will just be a quick review, then you'll, you know, someone will need to make a motion to approve it. But I'll do the statistics first, if you don't mind, just so that that's all together. And then if you think of something, in the meantime, let me know. But as I had originally sent to you, typically, the Sales Network just puts together the annual statistics for us. They do monthly statistics for us. And when it's time to do the ARIS report, which is a fiscal year report, they do statistics for that. They're great about it. But this year, those numbers weren't appearing on the site. And certainly, I can go through each month and figure them out myself. But it's so much easier since they have the ability to run those reports. It's so much easier when you just get it in a nice presentation, obviously. You know, it's so much easier on me and I'm sure directors. So I ended up reaching out to the network just to ask if maybe they weren't doing it anymore. I had missed it or something. And, yeah, they, I think they're overwhelmed also. And they just, I think it had just fallen off the radar. So they were, it took them very, you know, little time to compile it for us. And I'm very appreciative that they did, because it took them a lot less time to run the reports by the computer than it would have taken me to manually go through and create, you know, spread. You know, I do the monthly stats, but I don't do anything annually from all the categories. So huge help that the network did that. So what I sent you, I said to basically disregard. Everything in the general category was pretty much accurate, except for the patrons registered. We currently have, or through 2021, we have 4,974 patrons registered. The 4,995 was from the previous year. So this year, you'll remember, or excuse me, in 2021, we, I proposed to you that we remove old, lost items, you know, from like that were 10 years old or more. I think that's the year we went with. And in doing so, that removed some of the patrons from our database. Each of these, we removed those lost items, which were keeping them in the database. So we had removed about 300 patrons by doing that. But the reason why you don't see that, I mean, we only see it's a difference of, I think, 21 between the two years. And the reason why it's not in the hundreds is because obviously new people have gotten library cards throughout the year. So it kind of is a wash, which is great.
Dina, I have a question on the study room use.
And then in terms of the materials and whole things, I was like, the awkward, those numbers stable. And I have no hotspots to borrow. Hang on. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
You can hear me. Okay, good. Okay.
We can hear you. Nancy has a question.
Yeah, okay. That's when I lost you. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I caused it.
She just thought we were ignoring her question. That's okay.
My question is on the study room use. You've got 92, which I thought was quite high. Are you finding, is it people who are using the room for their, just themselves to study? Or has the tutoring stuff like what I used to do started up again?
The tutoring really has not started up. We, we're seeing that a little bit, but not on the level that we were before COVID. What we're seeing are adults who just, they're either working from home still or, you know, they were before COVID too, or they now are working from home. And they just need a place to come that's not home, you know, so that distractions of home aren't here. You need a quiet, quiet space. So we're seeing that fairly regularly.
That's a great idea.
Right. And we're also seeing some students who are being homeschooled. And for the same reason, their parents are bringing them here so that the distractions of home aren't interrupting their homeschooling. So we're, that's what we're primarily seeing right now. But again, a little bit with the tutors, though I have to say, some of the tutors that are coming in, we see them asking to use bigger spaces, like the table in the children's room, which is more open. And also the table in the periodicals room. We're occasionally seeing them use those. So I think that's, you know, the, the study rooms, while they can, one can fit three to four people, the other can fit two to three people. It's a closed space. So maybe for comfort level, people would prefer the open space. So we are seeing that in terms of the usage. But usage was pretty high when we first reopened, because again, the 92 people who used the room, that was, that's July to December only. So that's for six months of the year. But we saw a high number, I would say, like July, August, September of last year, and then somewhat of a dip from the fall and December. But this calendar year for 2022, we're already seeing a big increase. And for the month of February, we're only on the 8th. I think we already have 11 uses since. So it's being used daily. And some, you know, the appointments, it's, you know, written in the policy that the appointments are two hours. And then you can...
Uh-oh.
Just lost, yeah.
She'll come back.
Oh, can you hear?
It was two hours. We heard the appointments are two hours.
The appointments are two. Oh, my gosh. The appointments are two hours. And I have no hotspot to check out to help me. So I have to be better prepared if we meet on Zoom again in next month. Hopefully, we don't meet on Zoom again. But yeah, the appointments are two hours. And then you can stay in the room if no one is waiting. But we find that the people who are using the room are typically in there for a lot more than two hours. They're spending a few hours, which is fine, because people, demand isn't there like it was before COVID. But they're certainly being used.
Excellent.
Yeah. So thank you for asking about that. And I didn't go back on the 2019 report to compare, but computer sessions are down. I mean, we have five public computers plus the four laptops, but we have five PCs. Before COVID, we would see those five PCs in use at the same time. Maybe not all day, but definitely on the same day. And now there are some days, no one comes in to use the computers at all, you know. Someone might run in to print something, and that's the only time it's used. So people who were using the computers regularly before COVID either aren't in this area anymore, or they got a computer or some sort of device during COVID out of necessity, and they haven't had to come back. But I would say the majority of people who are using the computers right now are coming in to print, and it's because they don't have a printer at home. And we offer such a reasonable price for printing. You know, at 10 cents a page for black and white, you're not really going to find that anywhere else. So I think that's, you know, what we're seeing people do with computers. But that number has dropped.
I just had a question.
Sure.
Have you spoken to other libraries? Are they experiencing the same dip with computer use?
The couple that I have talked to are not experiencing the dip. So I haven't, it's not come up in a network meeting, but I will definitely, I'm gonna, that's a good question to ask. And I could certainly ask that the next time we're all gathered, you know, most likely by Zoom for a network meeting, just to get a sense. But the couple right around here, you know, where I talk to staff, they're not seeing the dip. So, but I'm not sure what their usage was like pre-COVID either. Like, they say they're not seeing a dip, but they might not, their usage may not have been as high as ours was before COVID. So that part, I'm not, like, they would probably, you know, it would be fun to figure that out. That's an interesting question. Thanks, Danielle. Making a note of that. And our computer usage pre-COVID, I would say, the majority of the people who were coming in, you know, it was the same people coming in six days a week because they had no other access. So this was their, their opportunity to get online. And, you know, I don't know how many other libraries were seeing that volume of the same people every, every day. Though I would imagine that's fairly common. And so then in terms of the holdings, I didn't really have to make too many adjustments there from what you were originally sent, except we are downloadable eBooks, audio, video. And that also does include magazines, actually. That's gone up about, by about 15,000 titles in the network. And that's certainly through demand, because the demand for downloadables network-wide has increased so much in two years. And then the big difference, obviously, was in terms of the circulation. That's what I really needed the help with. So in what I sent you yesterday, which are the final numbers, you'll see that the adult and teen books, the circulation was 20,688. Children's books, 29,008. Periodicals, 2,416. DVDs, 7,008. Audio books, 13,88. eBooks and e-magazines, 59,27. And downloadable audio, video, 4,770. And museum passes, 150. And hotspot circ, just October through December, was 31. For a total of 71,386 items circulated, which is a 47% increase over 2020 circulation. So obviously, 2020 circulation was, you know, more so impacted by COVID than 2021 was. And though our numbers are not what they were in 2019, this to me is really positive that we're climbing back up. And hopefully, you know, as things become even more normal in 2022, we'll be seeing a nice big increase a year from now in our circulation. And also, I did note here that we did see a slight decrease in downloadable books from 2020 to 2021, just a slight decrease. Just a slight decrease. I think we had circulated, it was sixty-two hundred in twenty twenty, and it was fifty-nine hundred in twenty twenty-one. Um and I network-wide, they're they're up in a lot of other communities, and they've stayed up. So we did see a slight dip, but I I think that also our physical circulation rose so much that it. You know, it's it's maybe people who are using um. Devices in twenty twenty out of necessity, but are now using physical items or back to using physical items in twenty twenty-one. So that is the report.
Anybody have any questions or anything to add? Okay, then we need a motion.
Make a motion to accept that report, the statistical report.
All in favor, by roll call. Jerry? Nancy?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Myself, I. That's for the acceptance of the annual report.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Uh next item for new business is the purchase of new office furniture and other building matters.
So starting with the furniture, um it just for especially for those of you who weren't on the board in twenty fifteen. When we relocated, um all of the chairs that are um in the staff area. And also, at the time, the chairs that were in the public computer space. Um those were all chairs that we had gotten from a local bank that had a surplus, and they were offering us um furniture. So my desk actually is from that location and the staff chairs. And like I said, before COVID, the public PC chairs um were also from this bank. Uh which was great, because it saved us a lot of money when we were moving. However, we're now dealing with old furniture. And like, I've got a a great desk, but a chair that doesn't really fit with it. Um if that makes sense, like, it's a really big desk, and I can't roll well up to it, that kind of thing. Um but I'd noticed at town hall that a lot of the offices there, the staff um have, within like the last year or so. Have gotten um uh converters to make their desks. Um like standing desks versus sitting desks. Um the converter raises your monitor and your keyboard, and um. I'm really interested in this option for myself, and I spoke about it with Sandra. And she's really keen to have something like this in her office as well. Um so the two of us are looking to get standing desk converters. Um they do run a few hundred dollars from what I've seen. And um it the prices sort of vary. I think I would go with what the town hall staff have. And I'm not sure what those costs, because I haven't asked that question, but they all seem to get the same one, I think, from what I understand. Because it's worked well for one person, and I'd rather go with something that I know um works well versus getting something that maybe doesn't end up working so well. Um but that's the first item. The second item is that I'm looking into purchasing a um mobile desk. Essentially, a computer cart with some shelves on it um for the children's room assistant. Um this would allow Melissa to work um in the children's room. You know, a lot of uh libraries, the children's room has a permanent setup in within the room, a desk and computer station. For staff to work in the room. We've not had that here. There's really not a space for it to add it in. I've tried to come up with situ, you know, ways that we could, you know, sort of switch the room around to allow for that. And we really don't have the space for something like that, but we certainly would have the space for a mobile unit that could be rolled into the room. Uh when Melissa is here, or if another staff member wanted to work in the room for a little while. Um and then that would allow the children's room to be staffed when there are families in the room. Um we're noticing that I would say since December. We tend to be busiest between three thirty and five every day. And there are times where there are four or five families in the children's room at the same time. And it would just be great if we had staff presence in the room when that's happening versus waiting for someone who's at working at the desk. To notice that there are people in the room, and then they go in, you know. Most children's rooms already have this, you know, setup, so it would be great if we could have something like that, too. And those, from what I've looked into, they also seem to run a few hundred dollars, up to five hundred dollars, depending on. You know, how many shelves you're getting under where the computer would go. Um and or yeah, you know, some have locking wheels, others don't have locking wheels. We'd obviously would like to have locking wheels, so um that we're thinking um up to five hundred dollars for that. And then finally, like I mentioned, um the chairs that we got very graciously from the bank in twenty fifteen. Um I have no idea how old they were before twenty fifteen, but they're not super comfortable chairs. Uh and they're not, I would say, great on someone's back when they're sitting for periods of time at the desk. So I would also like to look into possibly getting um a new chair or two at the info desk for the staff when they're working at the desk. Um the chair that's at the low terminal right now, which is that faces the children's room, is not adjustable. So if someone is sitting there and uh you know, they're they're not tall, then whoever's standing at the counter, unless it's a child, is towering over them. You know, the tall people don't seem to have as much of an issue with it, but the shorter people would like a chair that raises a little bit. So all that together, um I'm thinking it could cost up to two thousand dollars uh for something like this. Um it could certainly be less, but today I would ask you to either make a motion to purchase furniture up to two thousand dollars. Or if you want me to come back with a price list at a future meeting and go through it line by line, that's fine, too. Um so a motion either way would be great. Um. This would come through the gift fund that we have that's earmarked for um a new library. So we still have money in that fund, even though, you know, depending on your definition of new, um we still have money in that fund. Um and uh and we have right around forty-seven thousand there, so if it's okay. Um you know, if I could use up to two for some furniture, that would be great, but again, if you would rather me come back to you line by line, that's fine, too.
Uh I'd make a motion to be authorized up to two thousand dollars.
Thank you. Oh, you didn't do all in favor, sorry.
All in favor. Jerry?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And myself, I. Okay, now you can get excited.
That'll be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then um also, under this um new business, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the pavilion. There is a stage that's been put within the pavilion now, so I don't know if you've driven by when there hasn't been snow, and if you've been able to see it. But there um is a stage there, they're still working on it, um but it's nearly complete. Um Jim Merritt is recommending that a rail be put at the back of the stage to prevent someone from falling backwards off of it. So he's um he's out of town right now, but once he's back, I expect to hear more from him about that. So I will certainly keep you updated. Um but we already were planning a ten-week concert session. We already have eight of the concerts booked. Sandra has done all the work for that, um so that certainly makes us very excited for that um pavilion. Um to uh have its first summer here, and it's exciting to see the stage in place, so. More coming with that, but I at least wanted to give you that quick update. Um also, there's a couple of, um I guess I could call them concerns, building concerns that I think should be addressed by the building department. Either by um having um Mr. Merritt attend a meeting with you all, if you want to invite him to the next meeting, if he's available to to come in and sit with you. Or if our um board's building committee would like to just meet with him in his office to talk about it. Like however you decide to do it, I think is fine, but um my two concerns um that I think he can help with is. Um you may remember that a generator from the Council on Aging made its way to the library a number of years ago. It's behind the building in the um northeast corner. Um the DPW, you know, put the cement down for it. It went on that, and the generator's never been tied into the building. So it's really of no use to us. Um I, you know, I don't even know if it works. Um but I think, you know, when we do lose power, um. It would be super helpful to have the generator, especially in terms of keeping the building heated. Um and that was the reason why the generator was brought here in the first place, but it's never been hooked up. And it's one of those things that, you know, we maybe don't think about until there's a storm. Um but certainly with the blizzard we had recently, that's on my radar. And um I've tried to talk about it with Mr. Merritt in the past, but there's so many things always going on that. You know, it's like, yes, we're going to take care of that, we're going to take care of that, and then here we are. So um I'd really love the board to step in on that, and again, like I said, either with the committee meeting with him, which would be fine. Or if you want to invite him to attend the meeting, that's fine, too. Um the other piece that I think he could help with is devising something that would allow us. In a minute, but um this past weekend on Saturday, um even when we treated the deck. There was no way uh that we could have that deck open on Saturday. It was so slippery with all that ice, and it wasn't going to go over, you know, twenty-something degrees. Um so my husband and I rigged up some things to close off the deck. And apparently during the day, people were climbing under what we had rigged up and trying to get it by door. Um so and again, you know, something you only think about when you need it, you know. But it I think um if if, you know, the building department could somehow attach something to the building. That would allow, you know, us to drop something down. Any staff member could go out and drop it down as a barrier to the deck when it's slippery. Um I don't think it would be too difficult or be too expensive to do something like that, but um. And I think it would just, you know, be a huge help in terms of safety. So those are two things that, you know, I would love to address with with him, but again, however you want to handle that is fine, baby.
Thinking like a gate or something?
Yeah, like like even like um like an arm, like at a parking lot, you know, with those the those arms that come down. Um like, I think you you could eat with a hinge and like even the decking, that is like something weatherproof that could just come down with like. And then we would have a sign that would hang from it that clearly, you know, you'd have to like push the sign out of the way and crawl under it in order to get. On the ramp. Like, I I think something like that on both ends could be really helpful. Um because what we rigged up apparently with caution tape and black and yellow tape and. And it, you know, a sign sticking to the ground, it wasn't helpful.
They went through the caution tape?
They went under it, yeah. My and apparently at the counter, they said that they they didn't see the tape, but they. I mean, it was at eye level, so an adult would have had to go under it, so I don't know. But there's gotta be something like that. I mean, it, on the one hand, sometimes I worry that I overthink this. But we have a, you know, a large elderly population that use the library. And I, you know, we have a lot of kids who, when they come in, they run in, they run up the deck ramp. And you know, some it's really sweet, like they'll run in through the deck entrance, and then the parents come in through the front door, and they see who gets in first. It's very sweet and lovely, but run between the running on the deck and the elderly people using the desk when it's slippery just is a safety concern that I have. And I mean, really, it's some days, it's like, well, it's not so bad, but Saturday was real with that ice was really bad. So however you, you know, want to handle that with, like I said, we could invite Jim to a future meeting or. If building committee wants to chat with him.
If you if you want, I can, I can go and chat with him. I'll go see you and get exactly what you want or whatever, and then bring him the plans and discuss it.
Okay, and I mean, I know he has ideas for hooking up the generator. But, you know, I I think it would be great to act on that now, so that next winter, we're not wondering about the generator. You know, or if we have another big fall storm like we had this past year, you know, just something that would keep the heat on, you know.
How old is the generator?
I have no idea. It doesn't it doesn't look new.
Started?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't I don't know if it, you know, let's put it this way, the COA couldn't use it. So I, you know, they were being converted into a um. Oh, my gosh, like a, why am I blanking on the name of this, like a uh?
Yes, something I think that was hooked up to the gas line that automatically came on.
Right, but the reason they were getting that because they're a um. Couldn't think of that word. They're they're a shelter, so they were getting an upgrade um for that reason. But you know, I don't know how well the generator worked to begin with if they couldn't use that one. So I don't, I have no idea, you know, it's from what we were told at the time when it came here, which I think was in twenty eighteen, I think. But from what we were told at the time, it did work. Um at least enough to keep the heat on. Um but yeah, I don't I don't know if it still works, because we're talking, you know, we're talking a few years later.
So we'll have to figure out how long it's going to last and who, how we need to figure that out. Like, does somebody need to continue to put, like, is it electric? Does it just turn on? Like, I.
I mean. Right, would someone have to be here to do that? Right.
Right, or somebody have to do that. Um and then how long does it last? I mean, if it's not, if it's not something that, you know, I mean, all the generators, if they're not hooked right into the gas line, then you have to put gas in them. To, you know, to use it, and then typically, how, I mean, how long does that last? And do we want to have the generator running when nobody's there?
Right.
I mean, that's that's definitely, definitely a lot of questions. I think we would probably uh, we definitely got to ask him what his thoughts are on that.
Right, and I mean, I might be misremembering, but when it came here, it wasn't really like the board was given a a choice or I was given a choice. It was just that we're get, we're taking the COA's generator and we're bringing it to the library. Um you know, with a a former town administrator sort of led the way on that. So I'm, again, I'm, I I don't think it was a, hey, yes, we want this generator, and this is, you know, I don't, I don't think there was a lot of consulting that happened. But I think now we're at the point where it's, let's do that consulting and figure it out, like of how we're gonna, you know, get those questions answered, like you said, Jen. And then if we're not going to have it, then maybe it can just be removed from the property, because it's kind of an eyesore.
Right.
If it's not being used.
Well, and if and if it if it can't be used because it doesn't work, or and we feel that we could use a generator. Then maybe we go down that avenue to try to figure out how to get a generator that will. You know, I I know it's a little bit on the expensive side, but that will automatically turn on, so no one has to worry about it. And then, you know, it will do what you want it to do when you need it to be done. Rather than have to worry about, oh, my gosh, I live here, is it on? Is it, what is it doing over there? Is it, you know what I mean? Is you, everyone, other than Nancy and I who live right here, who probably if our power goes out, it's out at the library. I mean, other than that, who's going to know? So that, I mean, that might be, but maybe that does what we want it to do, so that that's definitely good.
Right.
So, all right, Diane, so you're going to talk to Jim and then come back? And then if um if you feel that, you know, um in your conversations, maybe that it's better that he comes. You know, that he comes and talks to the board rather than have you relay all that information, then that's totally fine. We can, we can, uh you know, invite him to the next meeting and put it on the agenda. Um uh otherwise, you know, if you talk to him and you want to come back and, you know, relay what he said, that that's perfectly fine, too.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'll stop at the library and discuss with Dina what to ask, when to ask and all that, and uh get it all written down, and then I'll just go and ask him.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
If it doesn't, if it come to your satisfaction, well, then we'll invite him.
That's totally fine.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I I just have to run to the other room to get my plug for my.
Okay.
I'm running very low, but I will be right back.
Okay.
Me, too.
We're we're narrowly there, I hope. Um. We can wait for Danielle to get back. I want to stress that I'm not on a PC for this. So this isn't our internet. That's the problem. It's the wifi for some reason. And those routers will be replaced and we'll be talking about that. But another, not today, but we will be talking about that. But they're, they're old now. So, but that is being looked into. But it's definitely wifi. It's not our internet when we're on our PCs. So our internet's knock on wood really good when we're on a PC. But I don't have a camera on my PC, which is why I'm using a laptop. And last time I relied on the hotspot, but like I said, all the hotspots are checked out, so, which is a good thing.
It is a good thing.
Yeah, it's great.
We have five hotspots?
Five hotspots. And we could have asked for more. The minimum was five, but I went with five because I wasn't sure how the program would be received. Oh, that's funny. So Nick says he's on the phone right now for final pricing for new routers. So that's great.
Fantastic. Thank you, Nick.
But yeah, so, we could have gone with more, but I just, we, we never really asked for hotspots before. So I, I didn't want to get like ten of them and then they were just sitting there all the time. Like I said, it's just within the past couple of weeks that we're seeing them, you know, being checked out more. And this is the, this week, I think, is the first time that all five are gone at the same time. So, and we started that in October. So any, also, under this new business line, I just wanted to mention the whole issue of snow removal, which I, I brought to your attention over the weekend. And I accept full responsibility for not bringing this to the board's attention every single time there's a storm. Again, it's not something that seems to be so much of an issue on weekdays because the building department will come shovel, the DPW, everyone's in their office, they're coming through to do things. But this past Saturday, with the ice that we had, not so much snow, more so ice, I would never leave the staff here on their own to figure out what to do. Like I would, I respect the people that I work with way too much. So it, you know, would, I would never have just stayed home and been like, oh, they're all intelligent and they'll figure it out. I would never do that. So I made sure I was here right before nine o'clock, which is when they start arriving on Saturdays. And the majority of the parking lot was done in terms of it was sanded. But unfortunately, the handicap spots weren't sanded. And a lot of the staff area part, back area staff and the staff area parking hadn't been sanded. The walkways hadn't been done at the staff entrance or at the deck. The main walkway I had left turned on on Friday night, which stays on for twelve hour, up to twelve hours. So I had left that on on Friday night when I left. So the majority of the main walkway was done, but there's about two to three feet at the end of the walkway, like at the parking lot. So I guess that's technically the start of the walkway. But the element that's in the cement is not there. It stops at a certain point. It couldn't run the whole way. And so two to three feet of what you, the patrons first walk on, you know, needed to be treated. So my husband and I were here for about an hour trying to remove that. I unfortunately had to call the head of the DPW, Dan Menard, on his cell phone on his day off to try to figure out who do I contact to have the DPW come back by with Sander for the handicap spots and the staff area. And I, I just feel like there has to be a better plan in place from the top down. And I feel like it has to come from this board. You are the residents of the town. You're the constituents. I feel like sometimes when it comes from me, it falls on ears that don't want to hear it. Or I send an email and I get absolutely no response. And as a department head, that's a little insulting. But also, it just might be because, you know, I'm not a resident. And I feel that you all as the residents and as the custodians of this building should have the power to say, this has to change so that this is taken care of from the top down and not something that, you know, we have to wait and see. I, I even considered on Saturday saying, we're just not going to open this building today because this is a liability issue for staff and for the public using the building. And we have to take that very seriously. And, you know, some year, like last year, we had hardly any snow at all. The year before that, I don't really remember that winter before COVID, so, but I don't think it was that bad. And, you know, I would say when we first moved to this building in 2016, it was bad. And I was here a lot shoveling and doing things like that. But then it changed and the town administrator worked with us to have that, you know, to have this taken care of. But as there's been change in leadership and sometimes, you know, I kind of hate saying this, no leadership. When we've gone through this transition period that we're in of not having a town administrator, things sort of, you know, again, don't become an issue until it's an issue. And then it could be too late someday if we wait, you know, continue to wait. So as I mentioned to you, I, I would, you know, really appreciate the board's support on this. And if you would like to invite the interim town administrator to meet with you, great. If you'd prefer to, you know, request from him that you have a meeting with a couple of you because you can't all meet with him at one time because then you'd have a quorum. But if you, you know, want to meet, you know, two, two of you with him, and I'd certainly be happy to go to that meeting also, but just to talk about what can be done for the safety of staff and of course, the public using the building.
So is there no set policy or process in place? It's just understood that the town takes care of properties when they can?
There's, there's, it's right. It's, I would say it's understood that, you know, on a weekday, chances are someone's going to come help you. You might have to call them, wait a little while before someone comes. And so you might go out and shovel because, you know, after the blizzard, to be honest, I was out there on Monday morning. Our custodian was out there. He only works 12 hours a week. I need him to work in the building. You know, when you only work 12 hours a week and you're during a pandemic that requires disinfecting things a lot longer than they did before, you know, I need him in the building working and the two of us are out there trying to chip away at, you know, feet of snow that was cleared, yes, but a shovel length was cleared on the deck and at the staff entrance. And that's not so safe either. But we were out there doing that and, you know, I'm at the point where I'm wondering, you know, does town hall staff get to town hall and are they out there with shovels doing this? Like, why, why am I out here doing this? Because also this is a liability for staff. If I got injured doing that, you know, you're potentially out a director for a little bit. And my custodian shouldn't, that's, that's not in his description to be, you know, the person for that. So, and that was, again, we're talking, that's a blizzard. I totally get, you know, every, you know, it was all hands on deck. I totally get that. But no, there's no formal policy in place.
All the town buildings are?
As far as I'm aware, there isn't. And if there is a policy for the, the main campus with town hall and parting ways, the library is, is not a part of it that I'm aware of. And, I mean, the only thing that we have to go on really is the union contract, which the majority of our staff are union, as you know. But in that contract, you know, that explains what to do in a weather emergency in terms of closing the building. But there's nothing within that contract about, you know, who goes out and does the shoveling and who, who treats the parking lot with sand and who's putting ice melt down? And where can you use ice melt and where can't you? Because we had an issue a couple of years ago with using a certain brand of ice melt on the walkway, which caused part of the walkway to crumble. So the main walkway. So, again, though, that, that should come from the top down. I mean, that really, there should be a plan in place. And again, it's not something that comes up all the time. So maybe it's just not on people's radars. But, you know, if you may not be so fortunate that someday your director may not be able to be out there with a shovel, whether that's me or someone else. Like, they might not be able to do that. I'm actually, as I think some of you know, I'm in physical therapy right now for a shoulder injury. That has nothing, an old injury. I probably shouldn't be outside shoveling. So, you know, this is just something that, that I think reached a boiling point for me on Saturday with needing to say, hey, something here has got to change. And I think it has to come from you as the board.
I agree. And I don't think that you should be having to call someone to come and make sure the library is done. I mean, you're the, other than, and I don't even know if the Council on Aging is open on Saturday. But other than that, you're the only building, town building that's open on Saturday. So there's just no reason, like it should be, oh, well, there's a storm. We got to go to the library because they're open today. And they need to get there in time for everyone to be able to get there and get there safely. So I think we, we definitely have to have a plan in place because this is absolutely unacceptable for you and anyone else to be out there shoveling. It's, it's, it's unacceptable.
Yeah.
So we.
I agree.
We don't want that.
No.
We don't want anyone to get hurt going to the library.
Nor should you have to call either. It needs to be a plan that if you're doing, if you would normally do it for, for anyone else in the town, if you're going out to stay in the town, you're going to take care of the library. And that's, you know, that's what's going to happen. And I don't care if it's a weekday or a weekend because they should still think of you on the weekdays just as much as they should think of you on the weekends.
Right.
You're, you're a town building.
Right. And also, you know, in, in terms of the parking lot, hey, the DPW does a fantastic job. And it's my understanding that pre-moving here, the library had to take care of the property on Main Street. That was not taken care of by anyone in town. It was, the custodian job description was written differently then. And it was the custodian who had to shovel the, both entrances, had to shovel the walkways, had to, with a snow blower, blow the parking lot before the library could open. But at that time, the staff was under a different contract. And the director through the Board of Trustees could say, the library isn't opening today. Whereas I really can't do that on weekdays at least right now because of the union contract. I can do it on weekends. And like I said, I did consider it for this past week. But circling back, like when the parking lot is done and the building department staff assists with this as well, but the entire parking lot should be done. Those handicap spots, again, we have a lot of elderly people who use this library. And it's not just saying that the elderly people use the handicap spots, but those handicap spots are heavily used. After the blizzard, there was maybe one and a half spots that had been cleared of the three handicap spots in the front. So I had to call the building department and ask, is anyone coming, do you know, to finish plowing the handicap spots? Because I, I don't, couldn't even have seen how if someone needed to use those spots, how they would have gotten out of their vehicle. Because it wasn't, it, it just didn't make any sense. So like the thought needs to be there that if I'm doing this parking lot, I've got to take care of the handicap spots. And when I go around and I get the parking spots, I have to get all of the parking spots, which I'm sure is a lot more time consuming. And I totally get that the roads are much more important than clearing park, town building parking lots. So I 100% understand that. But if you've reached the parking lot, then the full parking lot should be done so that it's safe for anyone who's parking here, patrons or staff, to enter the, you know, to get out of their vehicles to be able to get to the building. So I think that's really going to be really important to mention as well. Because it, you know, it's kind of strange to have to make that phone call. Like, you know, this wasn't done, like, you know. Why wasn't it done? Like, you have, you have to think about who's using the building. So that's, that's my other point to that. But like I said, however you want to set that up, I mean, that we had a department head meeting with the interim town administrator today. He's, you know, very open to people reaching out to him to schedule a meeting. So if, if a couple of you want to set up a meeting with him and, you know, like I said, I'd be happy to go with. Or if you want to invite him to a future meeting, if, you know, that, that's up to you, how you, you want to handle that. But I would, I would hope that he would be very open. And I believe he would be very open to meeting with a group of residents who have a concern about a town building.
I agree. What, what is everyone's opinion? Would we rather go be with him with just a few of us or would we, do we want to invite him to the next meeting?
Maybe give him the choice. Maybe give him the choice. What's easier for him?
Okay. My only, my only thought about waiting until the next meeting is, is that we're probably going to schedule our next meeting for March. And we're probably going to have another snowstorm. Gosh, I hope not, but we'll probably have another snowstorm before then. So I don't know if we want to take care of this before that happens rather than waiting until the next meeting and then potentially pushing this till next year when it's another issue. I don't, that's my only, that's my only thought.
I think Jerry's idea is a good one, but I agree with you, Jen. Timing is not going to work. I think next week, you and possibly one other person, try to get an appointment to see him. That, I'll gladly go with you if that's helpful.
Yeah, I would too. And we also have to be aware of every aspect that we have to cover. Like I wasn't aware of the ice melt, the handicap. I know you mentioned the handicap spots and all that. But we want to make sure we encompass everything when we speak with them.
I agree. Okay, let's, I will, I will reach out to him and set up a meeting for, for next week. I'll reach out and see what, you know, what days and times are, are good, you know. And then we can amongst ourselves, we can figure out, you know, what works, if that, is that good? Is there any day in particular next week that doesn't work? That's an absolute, like, avoid that day? Is there anything?
Seventeenth for me.
So that's Thursday.
Thursday, seventeenth.
Okay, so Thursday, not the seventeenth.
If you want to include me, then the fifteenth is my day off because I work Saturday next week. So if you do want me to be there, then the fifteenth.
Okay.
But if you don't, you know, if not, then that's fine, too.
Nope. So that's fine. So we'll do either Monday, Wednesday or Friday. All right. And we'll see if we can, I'll see what I can do about, you know, getting a time and, you know, we'll, we'll take care of that. Okay.
Is this, is this something that we should, when we meet with him, also talk about the generator and the other things, the big laundry list? Or just keep it focused to one thing?
I, I think it should just stick to the one thing for now because I do think that working with the building department on those two other pieces would, I think that'll, I think that'll resolve itself. Basically, I think it's just something that has sort of been pushed aside a couple of times. But I think we'll get a good response from Jim once Diane speaks with him, I think. And then, yeah, we wouldn't have to involve Mr. Kelly in that conversation yet, kind, you know, kind of thing.
All right.
That sounds good. And Dina, if you can think of anything else that you want us to address with Mr. Kelly, you know, when we can get the meeting with him, you know, definitely bring that to our attention and we'll, you know, we'll do that while we're there.
Okay. Sounds good.
That sounds good. I'll reach out to him and then circle back and let everyone know what, what the outcome is.
Sounds good.
That sounds good. Does anyone have anything else for any questions or comments about the new business? Moving on to the director's report.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, you'll read it. And another long one, that was, I think, three pages. I don't know if I've ever had a three pager for you before or not. But I really thought it was important to highlight what I'm doing with Melissa, our new children's room assistant. Because again, as I mentioned, she does not have a background in public libraries and a lot of, she, she's doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but there's a lot of training that goes into it, especially for it to be at the standard that I hold children's librarians to. Coming from the mecca of New York Public Library, I, I have very high standards, which, you know, I was put through as a new librarian. And she's very eager to, you know, follow, follow suit. So she and I are working, you know, fairly closely together. And I think it's going really well, but I think it's important for you to know that that's what we're doing right now. And I also, you know, want to repeat that it's really important to note, we've been down one person, you know, for almost a year now, which certainly has taken its toll on the staff, but I think the staff is doing a fantastic job. And like I mentioned, I just like to, to say that out loud when I can because I think they need to be commended for showing up every day and, and for doing a great job when they are here. And, and then just really quick, the winter reading program for grades K through eight, I think that's been going really well. We have over, actually exactly eighty children, though I think a couple more signed up today. actually exactly 80 children, though I think a couple more signed up today. It ends at, you know, in like 20 days, but we're still letting people sign up if they want to. Um, so I think we had a couple more sign up today. Um, but it's been great to see those families coming in every week to get the bead and to borrow books. And um, I think that was a, a really great idea to um, increase door stats and circulation uh, for the winter months, since we're not doing any programming. Um, you know, like we would normally do with storytimes or, you know, after school activities. It, it seemed like a good um, not all, certainly not alternative, but it seemed like a good promotion to have people come in. And I think it's been working. Um, I also mentioned um, that the Friends did a pop-up puzzle sale last week and raised over a hundred dollars in just a you know, a few days' time period, which is great because as you know, it, you know, and I think it's important to reiterate, the Friends haven't really been able to fundraise for the past few years. So it was, um, it certainly brought people in. I think I mentioned that, you know, we had 93 people enter the building on the first day of the sale. Um, which is about 15 to 20 more people than usual on a Wednesday. So I think that, you know, certainly speaks to people's eagerness to come in and, and get some puzzles. So that was fun. And important to note that we're um, participating in the annual Boston Bruins pajama drive, as a lot of libraries across the state are doing. It started February 1st. It runs through March 31st. And pajamas appropriate for all seasons, from children's size, small through adult, medium are most needed. And can be dropped off anytime the library's open. There's a laundry basket at the front of um, in the main area, right by the info desk. So people can just come in and, and leave some pajamas. And that will keep local kids in our area. Um, it will provide pajamas for them. So those were the highlights of the report. And then I sent you the statistics. And I just thought it was cool to mention that when I compared January 2021 to January 2022, we've seen um, between those two time periods of 55% increase in circulation, which I thought was great. 25% in adult circulation, 15% in young adult circulation, but a whopping 75% increase in children's circulation from January 2021 to January 2022. Once again, reiterating that our children's room um, is a busy place. Um, would be really great to have a full-time person staffing that room um, so that we can continue to meet the needs of the people who are using the space. And um, even though we saw a decrease in downloads from 2020 to 2021 overall, we actually saw an increase in downloads from January 2021 to January 2022. So I'm not, maybe people got some devices for Christmas and we're just finding um, a, a chance to download from the library for the first time. Um, because it was nice to see that increase as well. So there were increases across the board, which is great. And I hope that just means that we'll continue to see increases throughout this calendar year. Um, because we love to see that. A busy library is um, what makes me happiest. So when I'm here, so um, hopefully that just continues. So unless you have any questions, that's it. This was a long one. This, this, all those times where it was like 20 minutes, 25 minutes, bam, we made up for that today.
Lots to talk about. All right, do we want to set the next meeting?
I was thinking perhaps Tuesday, March 8th, or Tuesday, March 15th.
The eighth is okay with me. The eighth okay with everyone else?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Tuesday, March 8th. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Steve.
Me too.
Good for you, Nancy. Good for you, Danielle.
Yeah.
Diane? Okay, so we'll do Tuesday, the eighth. Do you want to do four o'clock still?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do Tuesday, March 8th at four o'clock. And uh, we will, we will discuss when it gets closer about whether or not to do, do more in person. Does that work for everyone? Well,
Yes.
We'll, we'll, I'll send out the email like we did this time and kind of just see how everyone feels about it. That work?
Okay.
Okay. All right. I think we got everything. All right, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, Jerry?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Eve?
Hi.
Nancy?
I.
And I. This February 8th, 2022 meeting of the Christian Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 5:22. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Oh, Dina. Thank you, Cable.
Dina, when can I go to see you at the library? Are you there tomorrow?
I'm here. Yep, I'm here tomorrow, Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
10 to 6 is the usual hours.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Bye. Bye.